So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Weber.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Ball.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes for approval of the agenda passes. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll. Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mr. Ball.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mrs. Weber, will you please provide an overview of our meeting protocols, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Thank you, everybody, for joining us here this evening virtually. For those of you who would like to access our agenda, we have that available on our district website under the Board of Education page. You can find both the agenda there as well as once minutes are approved from past meetings, we post those there as well. We do have a virtual public participation session. If you do want to provide information or ask a question on a non-agenda item, you can send me an email. In all likelihood, we will probably have to follow up with you at a later time if we don't receive that in a timely manner this evening. Our moderators this evening are Mr. Lewis and Mr. Fritz. You can also send them an email if you have questions during the meeting. You can use the chat function under Zoom. We do ask that you only use that in the event of having technical difficulties, not if you have questions or concerns. We'd rather have that be an email. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mrs. Weiss, to continue the meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Mr. Forstofel.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. As school districts across Ohio are taking the month of January to recognize the efforts of collective boards and individual board members, it's certainly important that we do do the same. So I'd like to offer some comments in that vein. So boards of education by their mere position or statute and responsibility are incredibly, critically important in times of crisis. And their response to crisis sets a tone for how the organization responds to such a crisis. Certainly, it's no surprise to anyone that districts across the nation were and are being faced with the crisis of a generation as we all deal with COVID. And COVID has presented challenges that no district, no school district should have to address, and yet we are. So how did this board react to this crisis? One, by directing the leadership team to do what was absolutely necessary to develop a plan to address the educational, the mental health, the training needs of students and staff while keeping that very same staff and students safe and healthy. By committing resources that supported our healthy A's back-to-school plan. By being responsive to the community and staff, their concerns, their questions, and even sometime their fears. And I know there were many. And then asking the hard questions of the leadership team as our plan was being developed and as it's been implemented and as it being evaluated. And certainly also clearly articulating the non-negotiables for the board as the plan took shape. What was important to you, both individually and collectively as a board, as we ensured our plan was good? And then finally, affirming the work and efforts of all those that worked so hard to plan, to implement, and adjust our healthy back-to-school plan and what is now our healthy A's plan. So what's the result? The general sentiment in this community is that our COVID response plan has been and continues to be successful. And that success has been recognized. And therefore, and so should the board be recognized for that. For their commitment to ensuring our plan took care of one, our students, our staff, and our community. As superintendent and as a representative of the entire community, I'd like to express my appreciation for the work of the Board of Education. And thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So not just words, we have gifts.
Oh, wow.
Okay? Congratulations and thank you for all that you do. So we'll start with, go ahead, Mrs. Weber.
Mr. Evans.
And I'm right in front of the camera.
I apologize for that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Mercurio. Thank you so much.
Weiss.
And Mr. Commerford, you made it through a full year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So thank you all very, very much. Appreciate all the stuff.
Mrs. Weber, do we have any resident participation this evening?
I do not have any emails for resident participation. Mr. Lewis or Mr. Fritz, have either of you received one? There we go.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Forstofel, I'm turning it back to you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. As part of the superintendent's agenda, you know, there are unique opportunities that a superintendent gets to really articulate and share the future of the district. And it's going to be my honor tonight in conjunction with Mr. Mercurio and a few members of our team to do exactly that as we share with this community the overview of our strategic plan. So let me set the table, if I can, just a moment. We began this process in September of 2019. And we began the process of charting the course for the district for the next five years. And really setting about how to develop an intentional and well-thought-out strategic plan that will guide the district for the next several years. But myself, Mr. Mercurio, we did not do that alone. We engaged what we believe and we know, and we experienced a really high-profile strategic planning team as that core team to help guide this process. And I'd like to just recognize those people by name first before we dig into the plan. Certainly, as the board liaison, Mr. Mercurio was intimately involved and very engaged in that process. Members of the district office team included Mrs. Weber, Mrs. Wagner, Mrs. Neber, Mr. Fritz, and Mr. Lewis. We had representatives from the building leadership team, Dr. Devolak, Mrs. Reinkie, Mr. Minow, and Mr. Tudor. We had parent representation, Mrs. Reinhardt, Mrs. Allen. And throughout this process, we engaged various segments of our shareholders, the ones we should be talking to, including building leaders, comprehensive staff, parents, and we never forgot student voice in this plan. So I want to recognize those people. So tonight, myself, Mr. Mercurio, Mr. Lewis, and Mrs. Wagner are going to share the broad strokes of the strategic plan. We want to talk about the important strategic themes that will guide this district for the next five years, but knowing there's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of plans that need to be made, but we want to come up on a high level. So Mr. Fritz or Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Lewis, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. So when you think about a strategic plan, the issue becomes why? So we ask fundamental questions as you think about charting the future. We need to ask questions like, where are we now? What is the current state of affairs in the district? And then you ask the next logical question, where do we want to go? What's most important for the vibrancy of this organization? And then to get to there, what changes do we need to make in order to get there? And then how should we make those changes? And then maybe most importantly, how are you going to measure once you're there? Okay? And I know that's very important to the Board of Education. These are questions that we ask fundamentally, our teachers ask as they meet in professional learning communities. These are fundamental questions with any high-functioning team. We thought no different as we engaged in this process. So that's kind of setting the stage. Key element of this process was the input, the thoughts, the imperatives and aspirations of the Board of Education. And I'd like to turn it over just briefly to Mr. Mercurio, who are going to share the next couple of ideas around that. So, Mr. Lewis, would you advance, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forstofel. As the board knows, we've been asking these questions on that first slide internally for maybe more frequently in recent time. And it became evident and apparent that we should reengage in the strategic planning process. First, I'd just like to step back and, you know, just remind, this is a chance to talk to the community, what the board is and what our role is in oversight of the district. We principally oversee three things in the district. That's academics, finances, and communication. We're laser-focused on student achievement as we're charged by our OSBA. But the questions we ask whenever something's presented to the board usually falls in one of four question types. And we continue to do this. These questions are, one, how does this positively impact students? Two, how are we measuring the direction and magnitude of its potential success? Three, what is the financial impact to the budget? How much does it cost? Four, are we effectively communicating with our stakeholders? This requires input and reporting of our actions. So as we look at the guiding thoughts for this strategic plan rollout, we have both short-term imperatives and longer-term aspirations. In both, you'll see that students are at the center of it all. Students, this board requires that students are provided a culture that is optimally engaging. This is one that encourages their input and ownership in their own future. Two, throughout this process, we've had both community and parent involvement as well with focus groups. They are the foundation of what we do and who we serve. As this continues to roll out, we need to continue seeking input. And I know that this board is interested in having town hall meetings and sharing some of those as it comes on. And the last one is that our talent is engaged and retained. We have some amazing administrators and teachers in this district. And it's imperative that we give these people an opportunity to take this plan, leave this plan, and make it successful. I could go to the next slide. So for the longer-term aspirations, we would like to be recognized as an exemplary, innovative, and high-performing district. Student achievement is growing again, and we seek to be award-winning and nationally competitive. Mr. Forstofel, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mercurio. So drilling down a little bit more specifically, you know, what are the roots of why you do strategic planning? Well, obviously, if you're leaning forward and thinking about the future, you want that vision to be compelling. You want it to be compelling to all of the people that are going to be impacted by this plan, all of the shareholders, students, staff, community, leaders. And so it needs to be an engaged process. Certainly underneath that, that roadmap needs to be very clear and specific, with specific goals and measures that people can attend to and monitor. And as the Board of Education can monitor the path of the strategic plan. Any good organization and the really great organizations have very clear alignment within their organization from top to bottom or bottom to top, however you want to say it, vertically, that shows that all are working in concert with the goals that are stated. And again, any plan needs to have the active engagement and active support of the leaders, staff, in order to gain commitment. Because the reality of this plan is those people are going to be implementing it. And certainly, as a result of that, high-functioning organizations have a clear strategic plan naturally retain top talent as a result of that. So those are some specifics. Mr. Lewis, a deep flip, please. I would appreciate it. Again, much of this information I won't go through, but I will share with you that just we pulled out some high-level, what I think are important facts about the district. But I will share to you, in absence of repeating those, we don't share these as an effort to rest on our laurels. We share these in an effort to say, we have an opportunity to get even better as a district. And that's the commitment of this plan moving forward. So if you'll flip again, Mr. Lewis, I appreciate that. If you'll engage me just for a moment about the planning process. Good strategic plans just don't take shape in a minute moment of time. They take thought, they take planning, and they take engagement. The planning process really began in September of 2019 and really had a good flow through February of 2020. And we did a number of things, internal analysis. We have a number of focus groups, including the Board of Education, staff, parents, students. We did some slot analysis that we thought was important. Really, it was an elongated data collection period. Again, back to the shareholders that are going to be impacted by this plan in a positive way, need to get their input moving up at the front end of it. Well, then, we all know what happened in March. Our worlds changed, our schools changed, and we had to pause. But we never forgot that this plan was important. And once, I don't even want to say things settled down, because they never really have, we began to resurface this again as a priority of the district. And we began to talk about strategic plan themes based on the feedback we got from all of the data collection. We began to come up a higher level and started to talk about mission and vision, which will be shared with you in the community in just a moment. And we began to drill down a little bit on three-year objectives and annual objectives, really the roots of what will be as part of this plan. So we are here right now. There was a lot of engagement within many of those shareholder groups that I just talked about to get us to where we are tonight. So what happens after tonight? If the board approves this plan moving forward, we will then kick into really the really more clear planning phases around project teams based on year-one priorities. We'll engage the community again to make sure that they're fully understanding of this plan and what it means for their students, what it means for staff, and what it means for the community. And then we'll move forward. So, Mr. Lewis, if you could go. This is just really some of the research phase that I mentioned on that previous side, that left side, okay? We did so many focus groups. We had it attended by staff at all levels. Individual board members were interviewed to get their thoughts. My student groups that I meet with regularly were highly engaged in this process and gave tremendous feedback around student voice. And we've done some organizational analysis. That's some of the internal. Externally, we scheduled multiple focus groups with parents. We engaged many, if not all, of our standing groups, like the Executive Advisory Council, who gave tremendous feedback. We did an analysis. We've looked at other plans throughout this process of really high-performing districts and what their plans look like. And we did our research. What are the latest trends out there? So I want the community to know that this was a thoughtful process. We took our time, but yet we paused in momentum, but re-engaged momentum as a result of the COVID crisis. And we are here, really, what I believe, in a good place. So I'd like to turn it over now to Mr. Lewis. Out of those multiple layers of focus groups, we identify several layers. Any good organization first identifies their strengths. They identify their growth areas. They identify their opportunities for growth. But they also identify what areas could be threats to this plan moving forward. You have to be transparent over that, and we will be transparent as we share this. So, Mr. Lewis, I will turn it over to you. Appreciate your leadership in this. And take it away.
So it's always great to, you know, as Mr. Forstofel said, it's always great to start with the strengths that you heard throughout the process. And I would say, as people that have been around the district for a while, many of us have been around for a while, that when you read and look at some of these themes, and I'm just going to pull out some high-level ones, you know, we know our community engagement is strong. We saw that with our last bond issue and our last operating issue of how engaged our community is and how tied in they get with those issues and understand our needs. Certainly, we heard Mr. Mercurio talk about our talented and strong teaching staff and our classified staff, all the members of our team, how engaged they are, and certainly how much they care about this district and care about the students of our district. Certainly, another major component that I have heard, you know, for the last nine years, our diversity is a strength of ours. And certainly, you know, continuing to foster that diversity and making sure that we celebrate that diversity. As you scroll down the list and you see resources and opportunity, certainly that we know that we have a tremendous number of opportunities for students and certainly also tremendous number of students for staff and resources that they can use to support our students. And then I would tie in quality of education and academic achievement. You know, I think that is one of the components that we're well-known for around the area is that they know, people know that we provide a strong academic base for our students and that we provide a high quality of education. We are a sought-after district for many reasons about our quality of education, our quality of opportunities that we provide to students. So last component that I'll highlight, mental health. Obviously, we've made a strong push to make mental health a priority in our district. And certainly, we want to provide those additional supports to our students and also our staff to make sure that they're prepared every single day to handle the rigor of our academics and also our students. So just some highlights of the strengths, obviously, you can read the other ones. And, you know, again, it's always great to see those high-level strengths that people feel about our district. So then you look at the next step, which, you know, it's obviously, it's important to point out growth areas. You know, what are some things that we are working on or continue to work on and things that maybe we need to think about? So again, I'll just highlight some. I won't go over them all. But, you know, certainly, when you're provided a great number of resources, you have to also be willing to audit your resources and look at your programming. Look at how you're utilizing those resources. And, you know, when you work through a strategic plan, do our resources support? And the decisions we're making with our resources, do they support our strategic plan goals? And that's something we'll have to evaluate and look at our expenditures and make sure that what we're doing does support the furthering of this plan. So that's an important step for us. Obviously, you know, as a district, you know, I've heard the second bullet a couple of different ways. You know, we are focused on academic success and achievement. You know, I've heard people say, well, maybe you're too focused on it and you should be focused on other things. And then you hear others that say, maybe you're not focused enough on it. So I think there's a happy medium there that we believe that academic achievement and success is a high priority of our district, is how do we balance that and make sure that we're, you know, providing a well-rounded education for our students, but still allowing them to achieve at the highest levels. Certainly, when you're doing that, you have to look at stress and you have to look at other things. We've heard about initiative fatigue, and you'll see that a couple of times throughout a couple of these slides. It's just, do we have too many initiatives and too many things we're working on? Do we need to get refocused on the foundational basics that we need to be hitting and make sure that we're covering those to the extreme depth that we need to cover them in? Staff diversity, looking at organizational issues, how we're organized. You know, are we clearly defining our why, why we do things and why we do certain initiatives? Challenging the status quo, I think, is always difficult for every organization. It's an area that every organization can grow in because you can get comfortable doing things a certain way. And then certainly accountability goes along with, really, any time that you're doing high-level things that I believe that we do, you have to hold people accountable. And certainly, this strategic plan will give us a structure to hold not only our district leaders, our board, our administrators in the building, and our teachers and the rest of the staff in the building accountable to where we want to go the next three years. So this really is an exciting process because it's providing us that framework to be able to do the things that I think we agree as a district. After three years, we're going to have a pretty good destination where we end up. So again, it's an exciting process. It's exciting to look at your growth areas and figure out, as a district, how are we going to continue to grow along with this strategic plan? So some opportunities. Certainly, personalized learning is an opportunity to look at and, you know, enhance our work that we're doing with student learning. We've got to define curriculum levels, K to 12. And, you know, I know in my conversations with Mrs. Wagner and Mrs. Neber, they realized that, you know, there's going to be a lot of work around the strategic plan to really go back and look at, you know, are we covering, and something that Mrs. Wagner and I talk about a lot, are we covering everything to the depth of the standard that we need to get to to make sure that every kid is achieving at its highest level and getting as much of the coverage of those standards as they can as they work through our system, our curriculum maps in line, our pacing guides in line? You know, so those are evaluations that we'll have to do as part of this process. And I know that Mrs. Wagner and I and Mr. Forstofel have been working through discussing curriculum audits. And again, that's another piece that I think is an exciting process as we work through, again, these opportunities for change and growth. Moving down the list. Again, going back to educating people on our why, making sure that we make that clear to people, making sure that we understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. You know, engaging with the more underrepresented. I've heard this a little bit throughout the district in my passings that, you know, making sure we're serving our populations equally and making sure that we're reaching all students and helping them to their highest level of performance and helping them through those barriers and challenges that they may be facing that's blocking their education. So I know it's something we're very passionate about. Staffing audit and resource audit, again, going back to those resources and how we utilize and expend money, continuing to look at that and making sure that we make sense of our expenditures and do they align with the strategic plan. Alignment of our BOE district and admin of district admin and admin of our buildings. Obviously, alignment, as you saw throughout our strategic plan goals. It's an important concept, and you heard Mr. Forstofel talk about the vertical alignment. It has to be there for us to be able to be successful with our strategic plan. So it's something that we're going to have to work on. And then again, a return to those mental health supports. And, you know, obviously, you see other opportunities on the page for us to consider as a district. The very last one, certainly, any time that you look at your district, you have to look at threats. What are the threats to, you know, causing your plan not to succeed? Misalignment of the Board of Education, district admin, building admin, and teaching staff. If we do not have alignment with all of those individuals and all of us working in the same direction, trying to further the district, we're not going to be successful. So I think that's probably going to be one of the most important pieces of the strategic plan, is making sure that we stay in alignment. We revisit this topic and make sure that people are understanding, again, that why of why are we doing certain things and why are we moving in this direction to make sure that we hit and make sure we're successful in all the goals of the strategic plan. You know, certainly, we all recognize that as a district, there are high expectations. There are high expectations from our community. There are high expectations from our parents. There are high expectations for all of the staff that work within the district. They have high expectations for themselves, and they push themselves to the limit. And certainly so to our students. So I think our goal and our threat is to make sure that we're meeting those high expectations from all those different constituents. Again, you heard initiative fatigue and, you know, making sure that we're not wearing people out with too many initiatives. Post-secondary success metrics, making sure we're defining and monitoring, what are our students doing after high school? What are they doing? Are they going to jobs? Are they going to a four-year college? Are they going to the military? And, you know, what does that tell us about how And, you know, what does that tell us about how we're preparing them for the next steps in their lives and careers? And then a couple at the bottom, you know, innovation, you know, making sure that our innovative practices support what are core things that we're trying to accomplish? Are they helping us and can we prove that they're being successful? And, you know, making sure that we can continue to report that out, that how they're supporting us in those goals of raising the academic achievement for our students. Certainly finances is always a component. I don't think I've ever seen a presentation where money is not involved. So certainly that can be a threat. Probably on our side, we, we have the resources to do things. And sometimes, you know, that, that can be a threat as well, just causing us to really think strategically through this and making sure that we're, our expenditures again are, are making sense and really lined up with what we're trying to accomplish. And are we doing it the best way or are we doing programs that we no longer need to be doing? And do we need to audit and remove some of those things? And then certainly change is hard. And certainly, I, I believe that, you know, this will be a challenge. But I think it's a challenge that not only our staff, but all of our administrators and students will be able to rise up to. And I, I believe our board will hold us accountable to making sure that that change occurs. And making sure that perception of the change is a positive one. And we want to make, make sure that this strategic plan is looked at as a, a positive thing. It gives us structure and goals for the next three years that really we can all get behind because we had complete involvement around the district. So again, happy to see all these different, all these different pieces of feedback. And certainly, we valued the feedback as we worked through our process to be able to line ourselves up kind of for the next steps that you'll see here in a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Moving forward. It's pretty clear that a high performing dynamic organization has a very clear mission, vision and values. And, and these statements that Mr. Mercurio is going to review in just a moment have been thought through very carefully. And I hesitate to use the word North Star because you're going to hear that in a little later in the presentation. But it really is, that's what it is, right? It's what our organization points to. And that's what everybody should rally around. So Mr. Mercurio, I don't want to steal your thunder, I'll let you take these.
So how does this all come together to be our roadmap? It starts with the mission, vision and values. The strategic planning team with input from district leaders created this, we revisited our mission statement and created this. Cultivate a culture of academic excellence through inclusive and innovative learning opportunities for the whole child. I'm aware, the vision, if we could go to the next one. We seek to empower all learners to reach their full potential in a globally competitive world. And the values that underpin this that are unique to Sycamore is academic excellence has been a pillar of this district for many years. Combined with the second one, which is diversity and inclusion makes us truly unique. I know that a lot of people that migrants like myself that have moved into the Cincinnati area, we, we all congregate in the northeast corner of the county. And we're all attracted by the academic excellence. And there's a lot of choices in this area. But the one that sets us apart is the diversity profile of Sycamore. And it really does bring us together and makes us a community. Those are, those top two are what makes us a destination district of similar values. Next one, community. We have a very strong and supportive community. We have the ability to leverage this community. They have amazing talents to help our students improve and find themselves and where they want to go in their lives. Strong community equals strong schools. And it's our job with the strategic plan that's strong schools deliver on to their strong community. The next one is the pillars of character. It's been around, but we need to have it integrated K through 12. And I think you're going to hear pretty soon about Portrait of a Graduate from Mrs. Wagner. Last one is collaboration. We need to all work together to bring together a successful strategic plan. This includes a voice for all, teachers, district leaders, board, community, taxpayers, all stakeholders. I could go to the next one. So I mentioned that BOE is charged with student achievement. So the imperatives in the plan as we go forward is we want to re- obtain top five school district in Ohio. We want to align and optimize this high performing culture vertically throughout the organization. We seek to achieve, re-achieve and maintain an A grade in school and units. We seek to create student opportunities to reach full potential. With data and technology and consideration for personalized learning for each individual student, we have an opportunity to make adjustments for kids when they're ready for more. Last, ensure academic rigor for every student. We can overcome some of the logistical obstacles of the past, even if it occurs in the middle of the year, to help kids continually improve. Mr. Forstofel?
Thanks, Mr. Mercurio. So in just a moment, I, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Wagner. And she's going to review the strategic themes that are really kind of at a, another level and a little bit more specificity of what will guide our district. But before I do that, I do want to call this out. And this may look like a little disjointed, but what you won't see in some of those strategic themes that Mrs. Wagner is going to say and talk about are the, the immediate things we're working on right now. We're working on a lot, but I need the community to know that we are aggressively planning and attending to the student mental health needs. We have been for a while, but we know very clearly that the challenges with COVID have brought about some additional challenges for our students. We're continuing to work on and implement specific plans to address those challenges. I made that a priority from the very beginning of our COVID plan, not letting go of that. So I want the community to know that. This community knows really, really well that we've put a robust remote learning plan as part of our COVID response. That was a response, but also taking this as an opportunity to look at what we, we might be able to continue offer. Hopefully, when COVID is gone. So we're continuing to look at that and evaluate that and lean forward in the immediacy of what opportunities could exist. Those are not evident in this plan because we're working on them right now. So I wanted to call that out specifically for this community and let them know. So that being said, out of those broader themes and those visions and missions and values, we've started to, we, we've crafted very specific strategic themes that will guide the work, the specific work of the next several years within, within the district. And they're themed in four broad areas. And Mrs. Wagner in a moment is just going to kind of break those down a little bit. And at the end of that, I'm going to talk a little bit about what's next within those strategic themes. Okay. Because that's really, really important for the community here. So Mrs. Wagner, I appreciate your leadership throughout this process and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Forstofel. I'm really excited to share these themes with you because as Mr. Forstofel says, it just provides a little bit more specificity into the strategic plan. And as he said, this is going to guide our work for years. So that's really the main reason why I have this kind of futuristic background going. So if you're thinking, is she really that nerdy that she did that on purpose? The answer would be a big yes, I absolutely am. So really excited to share this with you. So when, when all of the groups were giving feedback, the focus groups, strategic planning groups, board members, students, families, teachers, four big strategic themes emerged. The first one, academic achievement, clearly that is our top priority. And that is our core business, you know, so that raised to the top. Also vibrant community partnerships. We know how important it is that we have a strong community partnership with our families, with communities, but also our students having those strong partnerships as well. That was another piece that really kind of came out of all of the feedback. Excellence in operations, that is overall financial expertise, technology, operations, business operations, master facilities, all of those pieces, excellence in those areas. And then the last theme that we're going to break down here in a moment is the student focused culture and learning. That's where we really start looking at the whole child piece as well. And really narrowing in on, on those, those ideas of social emotional learning and culturally responsive practices, diversity, those types of things. So all of these themes, when we start to break them down, you will see that each theme has an objective, three-year objective, and then also goals. So as we dig into each of these, thank you for advancing, you will see that the layout in terms of the specificity is the same for each of these four themes. So there'll be a three-year objective and then also highlighting the goals aligned to that. So the very first one, as I said before, academic achievement. This is our top priority. This is our core business. This is why we do what we do. We want all students to be able to reach their full potential and have strong academic success. So as we dig into this piece, you will notice that not only is it the curriculum piece, but there's a data component to this. So what I love about this plan is that it brings even more intentionality to our practice of using data to drive our decisions. And so this will provide just an even deeper dive into that with our data analysis team. We already have established goals using data that we have worked collaboratively with the board to identify. But what this will do is will give us even more specificity. This will give us the opportunity to dig even deeper into those goals and some of those stretch goals. And to use Mr. Mercurio's words from either, from earlier, you know, measuring the magnitude of, of achievement. And so this first year with the data analysis team, they will collaboratively with the board determine what those success metrics are. And again, certainly we'll still have the lens on the ones that are currently in place. But this gives us an opportunity to just really dig deeper and perhaps enhance those as well. So those metrics will be clearly defined in that first year by that data analysis team. The other team, the curriculum and reporting team, Mr. Lewis alluded to this earlier. We want to verify and enhance high quality aligned curriculum K through 12. So vertically, as you move up the grade levels, but then also horizontally within the grade levels. So part of that team, when they're established, will be, will be determining those project statements. I think was either Mr. Forstofel, I believe, or Mr. Lewis mentioned a curriculum audit. That's one of the first things that we're going to need to do is let's take a look at what we have. We've got some really great things, let's build upon those. But what are some areas in which we can improve? And let's, let's dig into that. So that's really going to guide our work as well for that achievement piece. All right, next one, thank you. So the vibrant community partners. Okay, as we look at this, we, we know that our students need to be future ready to be successful. So yes, academic is at the top, but we also know that we need to include future ready skills with our students as well. So we want them to have some rich experiences. So as we look at making sure students have experiences and exposure to different, different situations, the partnership steering team, what that team will do is really look at enhancing that learning experience through partnerships with students. And how can we partner with our community to really bring in, whether it's internships or other types of experiences for our students? The student leadership program team, so they will look at how can we really enhance the student leadership program? You know, we've got some of those pieces in place, but what can we do to make that even better? Now you will notice that on this slide, it says year two. So this will not be the first phase of the work. This will start in year two. We will get that curriculum and that data reporting piece and get those goals set first. And then this will layer on top of that piece. Next one, please. Number three, excellence in operations. What I really like about this is that last line of the, the last part of that sentence, it says, to ensure district success in service of the community. You know, we've got this plan in place to support and ensure that we are being in service to the community. So that includes the financial, operational facilities, those types of things as well, which you kind of think of operations. But what might not come to mind actually is that human capital piece. And how are we making sure that we're really supporting and empowering our, our, our folks to do the very best that they can do? And so one of those goals you'll see is this building leader support team. So what this will allow us to do is to bring more specificity and really look at the role of the building principals and look at what we can do to ensure that they can be even more involved in the instructional leadership of their buildings, which really is the core business of a building principal. So that is that first priority there. And then the other piece with the master facilities planning, that is ongoing. We will just continue that process as we go. Next one. Number four, student focused culture and learning. So again, we know that culture is imperative. There, there's a phrase, and I wish that I could remember it exactly, culture eats strategy for breakfast or for lunch, or there's some meal in which culture is eating strategy. So it just kind of, you know, reinforces the idea that we, we, we've got to get culture done, you know, first. So when you look at a high performing culture, we're not only looking at the culture within like our adult workers in Sycamore, like our district leadership team or administration team or our buildings or, or our staff. We're also looking at the culture of our buildings as well. What does that culture look like for our students? Do they feel as though they are welcome? Do they feel they belong? Do they see themselves in their curriculum materials, in their instruction, in their, in the adults that are in their building? So it's both of those pieces, inclusive, belonging. Think about that social, emotional, mental health component that Mr. Lewis mentioned earlier. You know, we know that is an important piece. That was really clear in a lot of the feedback that we got from folks. And I go back to the all means all. We want all students to be able to reach their full potential. And so this really kind of encompasses that, that culture in which we can make these things happen. And so that culture development team, again, that they will be forming their project statements around, what can we do to really enhance that culture that is focused on students and also on learning? And so then these four things kind of come together to what Mr. Forstofel said earlier, our, our North Star. So if you reflect back to the, the mission and the vision and the values, you know, we looked at the, the whole child. Academic achievement absolutely is part of that. But then there are other pieces that we know, based on the feedback from all the stakeholders, that we really want our Sycamore graduates to have when they leave our nest and they're ready to fly. We want them to be really ready to go out and make a difference in this world in lots of different ways. And so the portrait of a graduate kind of sums all of that up. What do we want for the ideal Sycamore graduate? And so as you look at those competency categories there, critical thinker and problem solver, goal directed and resilient learner, competent communicator, those tie directly back to academic achievement. It's a, it's a both and, it's not one or the other. You've got to have all those things if you're going to be strong academically. Look at the, the empathetic collaborator and respectful global citizen. Again, that goes to that student focused culture, that inclusive piece, that belonging piece, that respect piece. And so these actual terms here, the critical thinker and problem solver and so on, this is a draft because there will be a team that's put in place to really solidify the exact terminology. But the key is that this is based on all of the feedback ties directly back to the mission, vision and values. And this is our North Star in terms of what we're all aiming for, for all of our Sycamore graduates.
Mrs. Wagner, thank you. I appreciate that. So I kind of, kind of in an effort to put a bow around this, I, I want to just share a little bit about maybe what the community didn't see in those strategic themes. Because that lends to what's going to happen next. What you didn't see is some of the specifics that are going to go into the year one priorities that you saw under each theme. And how are we going to get there? And once board approves this, we will then begin to put together what we're going to call project leadership teams around each of those year one priorities, who will start to really work through some of the specifics and the details and the strategies on how we get to the specific priorities in year one for 21, 22. So they will put together the work plan for the 21, 22 school year around the year one priorities. for the 21, 22 school year around the year one priorities. But equally important in that is not just the work plan, it's the measurement of those success matrix for each of those year one priorities. Okay, that's really, really important. Our job is as that work continues is to bring that update back to the Board of Education. So you guys have a familiarity and a comfort level with that. Because once those project teams, once we establish the plan and the metrics, then the work starts next school year on those those specific priorities. Community also didn't see, they saw some reference to year one, year two. There will be year three priorities as well. We looked at the balance of all these year one, year two and year three priorities, and we had to think about capacity. We had to think capacity in the organization to to not just adequately, but how to attend to those priorities in a really, really good manner to make sure we do it right. So you can have too many and you do them at a less level. We we really identified what we believe were the really important year one priorities, year two, and then you will see year three. So related to that, I would also share that we will think very carefully within those project teams about the specific metrics for success. You heard Mrs. Wagner say that in the year one or in the priority around academic, you've already got some good foundation of some of those metrics already talked about at the board level around academic achievement. We're going to build on those and not really start from scratch, okay, and work through those. Okay, so I think it's important to know that. So that's between that that occurs between now and the end of this school year. And then once all those specific plans are in place in year 20, 20, 21, 22, that's when we start the work on year one priorities, which will involve annual goals, project implementation. It's important that we continue to bring back quarterly, at minimum quarterly updates to the Board of Education. So the board knows as a broader oversight at a high level, the work that's being done around the strategic plan. I think it's also important to note that once this plan is approved, I know you know, at some point, the board will appoint and hire a new superintendent. And it's important that the board, at some point, I believe that the board get input from the new superintendent on the plan. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, the new superintendent is going to be charged with managing this plan and engaging the community around this plan. And I know the board will do that. And also with the board and the community to know that even though that this superintendent is exiting, that it's been an honor to work through this process. And this plan's not about me. This plan's about what's right for the district and it was engaging and got a lot of input throughout the process. So at that point, I've stopped and taken any questions or comments from the board.
I would just like to echo the comments on thanking the leadership team that put this together and the community involvement that we had. You know, I think it's a great plan that's been put together. Still work to be done on it, but thank you to everyone who participated in the in the process.
Yeah, and I would, I think, Mr. Forstofel, up with your comments about, you know, we have been on a journey over really the last three years feeding into this plan, developing some some initial metrics and other things that'll, you know, be sort of the basis to, you know, evaluate and then expand upon it that we've learned in that process. I think, you know, that learning process and then carry on a more formal process here is exciting to follow.
I just want to say, you know, when COVID hit in March, and like you said, Mr. Forstofel, we all focused our attention on that and our district and what we were going to do to ensure a great education for our students and be very supportive of our staff and our teachers and our administrators. But while we're doing that for two months, we then said, oh, wait, we still have that strategic plan. And we just kind of went back into gear and actually I I do want to kind of echo the comments of Mr. Ballant and Mr. Evans to thank you and Mr. Mercurio and Mr. Lewis and Mrs. Wagner and Mrs. Neber and Stacy Spencer and everybody who had input on this. I mean, our community involvement in this has been phenomenal. And I I'm just really, really proud of all of the work that you guys have done. And it's going to be very exciting for Sycamore for the next three to five years and see how this plan actually comes to to be. So thank you very much for all of your hard work.
At the risk of piling on, I'm going to say a similar message of appreciation. I think to put together a quality strategic plan is critically important for the district. And to do that and complete that work over the past year is a testimony to the to the team that was assembled to do this work. And honestly, the team to execute this is everyone. And so I would I would continue to welcome input and feedback on this plan from the community, from our all of our great administration and staff. This this is this is vitally important. I think you used the word North Star. And I think that's very true on a strategic plan. For the COVID, we were agile and nimble. We talk about those words. I think there's some ability, some amount of agility we need here. And I I look forward to these teams as their form to help frame this even more completely for that North Star.
Mr. Mercurio, as the board liaison to this plan, any any final comments?
You know, I would just like to thank Frank, you and your administrators and building leaders. Because and and of course, everybody on the strategic planning team, because we have spent countless hours and many sessions reviewing loads and loads of input. And every time chunking it down and getting closer and closer to having a plan like this that's before us. And just very proud of this product that we have here and looking very much forward to the next steps.
So Mrs. Weiss, on the agenda, there's no formal approval of this plan. But I would I would call the question, is that something that the board might be interested in formally taking action on to approve the strategic plan moving forward? I think that's at the discretion of the board.
I I would like to have a formal and with
I'd like to make a motion to to approve this plan. I second that.
I think we've all made our comments. So Mrs. Weber, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Comerfer?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right.
Thank you all.
Moving on. I need a motion for the approval of the construction documents, stage the middles for EH Green Intermediate School and Sycamore Junior High School projects.
So moved. Second it. These are important documents moving forward as we continue to review and we're actually refine our designs for our master facility projects. So I will turn this over to Mr. Lewis and or Mrs. Weber.
The only comments I have is, you know, this is it's a little bit larger than we normally receive authorization for, but obviously, we've been working towards this day where we are asking your permission to seek bids for EH Green Intermediate School for the new building. And also, as remind our public, we are maintaining a portion of the building, the two gymnasiums and the current cafeteria that'll be converted into a music wing in the amount of 26,000 or 26,500,000. And then also asking for Sycamore Junior High to bid that out, obvious. And that is a complete rebuild, including the theater at estimated cost of 37 million. And I I just want to point out to the board an important thing. It's a requirement by the state of Ohio for us to publish bid estimates. Mr. Janigan and I would agree that we think it's ridiculous that we have to publish an estimate because, you know, again, our our team is doing the best that they can to take an educated guess. And, you know, looking at all the factors, looking at all the things that they study, looking at all the bids that have come in over the last 12 months. And they make some educated guesses based on, you know, their expertise and their work. So what we what we are not permitted to do, if the bids were to come in over 10% higher than the number, which we would never want to do, we would be required to reject all bids and go back to the drawing board. And honestly, if it came in that high, Mr. Janigan and I would be recommending to reject all bids anyway because something went awry. But we feel confident in these numbers. I know Mr. Janigan and his team did a lot of research, did a lot of work. And honestly, they did a lot of listening. They they really have tried to capture as much of what they could in these two buildings of the the wants, the needs, the desires. And, you know, I want to remind the board, you know, we did have a little bit higher budget for EH Green when we originally set out for this. But when we decided to maintain a portion of the building, we shifted those funds to Sycamore Junior High to pay for the community theater that we knew was an important piece for this community. So that's the difference and the disparity in the numbers, you know, that's really one of the major differences. And then, you know, as we work through our process at EH Green, we also worked hard to fit in four additional classrooms because we wanted to have that additional space due to Mr. Mercurio's enrollment projections that we studied closely. And we felt strongly that that was a good additional cost to add into the project. So we believe and and Mr. Janigan would agree that right now we're trending with what our budget was sustaining, what what our budget would sustain or allow us to do. And we're hopeful that the bids come in at or below budget. So with that, I have no further comments and I'll ask Mr. Janigan or Mrs. Weber if they have any further comments.
Yeah, the only the only comment I'd like to make, and I say this to someone probably at least once a week, is that when you think about what our environment has been like over the last year and the fact that we are to this point where we are getting ready to bid these projects, it's really a testament to Mr. Lewis's leadership, his partnership with with SHP as well as just our building leaders and their work to be able to keep these things on track. I don't know that any of us ever would have thought that come this spring, we would be getting ready to break ground on on these two buildings and would have our other two buildings, you know, Sims is is already well on its way to being renovated. You know, it's just great job, Mr. Lewis. Thank you for leading that process. And I, you know, look forward to bid day and hope these the market bears what we hope it will and some of these bids come in under budget.
No, thank you. Thank you, guys. And just to echo the the it's been a great experience with the team, top to bottom. I think it's going to get the projects are going to have a lot of interest. I had contractors say to me, I want to work for Sycamore. I've worked for them in the past and and they're great to work for. So that's a testament to the path project. So I think I think we're going to see good numbers in February. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
No, I would just say one comment on this. I know, Mr. Lewis, you're working hard on the bus compound as we talked before, which may, you know, feed into this at a later date, but I appreciate you keeping all this moving forward along with the unknowns as well.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Comerfer?
Aye.
And Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for the Sycamore High School renovation project.
So moved. Second it. Mr. Lewis, you want to take this? This is related to our Sycamore High School renovation?
Oh, I guess one one comment I would have, this is probably one of the largest change orders I've ever asked you to approve. And certainly hope it makes me uncomfortable seeing numbers like this, but I want to refresh your memory just very quickly. The reason that we did it this way is GMP one was really for the the whole package of building temporary classrooms and constructing temporary offices so that we could get ahead of all the renovations. And really, it's an aggressive phasing approach that Mr. Mater and his team agreed to allow us to do this phased approach. And it really shaved months off the project. We're talking 12 to 13 months that we were able to shave off from the original estimate of 41 months. So we believe we'll be in the 28 to 29 month realm when we're all finished. And, you know, again, it's aggressive. But, you know, I think that's that's the way we operate. We want to be aggressive. We want to go after it. And we want to, you know, see if we can shave off costs so that, you know, we don't have wasted, in my mind, extra time is wasted cost. So a big kudos to Mr. Mater and his team because Mr. Mater and his team are going to be relocated to the upper gymnasium area and temporary offices for the duration of the construction, which is again, is 28, potentially 28 months. So, you know, he is leading by example, making that sacrifice. The other group of people that are making a similar sacrifice is the guidance counselors will be in temporary offices in what used to be the wrestling room. You know, we removed everything from the room and it's going to be a nice space when they finish building it out. The other thing that's included in this is 19. I'll call them temporary classrooms, but two of the classrooms are going to be permanent classrooms that will actually be, one will end up being the permanent home for all the library books and things of the hub and the media center. And the upstairs of that facility will be a classroom that can be utilized and, you know, kind of reserved out by different groups that might need to be in that hub area. So you might recall, we we during, right before winter break, we approved a smaller package of a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And that was really to get us going. And if you saw my pictures that I posted on Twitter and things of that nature, our our, we put up walls and drywall studs and got, you know, really things in place within a two week period. And they did an amazing job getting all of that done in a very short period of time. They demoed out all the lockers. So that was the first 200,000. This change order today of 1,126,263. And of course, I know Mrs. Weber loves these additional cents and 94 cents. That is the remainder of all the temporary classrooms, the rest of the construction to get us ready for this phasing approach. Just to give you a perspective, if we were to buy or rent or whatever you want to call it, if we would have went the trailer way, the tempor- the mobile classrooms, whatever you want to call it, the outdoor trailers, what if we would have gone that direction, we would have spent this or more. And probably the most exciting part of this is of the 1.39 million that we'll spend in totality on GMP number one, about 330,000 is permanent construction. So if you back that out and you look at our budget that we had for these temporary rooms was hovering at about 5%, our bids have come in around 3.8% for this temporary work. And, you know, it'll, again, it'll be a phased approach. And I think in the long run, will save us the additional money that we sought out of this package. So again, kudos to everyone. And I'll just say, I'll give the high school team and the high school teachers a kudos upfront because, you know, they're going to be working and shifting and, you know, we may be finished on a Friday and maybe move maybe move to a new room on Monday. So I know that will be difficult for them, but I believe that they will step up to the challenge. And again, I I know, once the high school teachers see the finished product, they're going to be pleased with what we come up with. So again, exciting times at the high school, exciting times all over the district. But I think this is just going to be another thing, another piece to our puzzle that, you know, when we finish our master facility plan, we're going to be very proud of the work and the decisions that we made on this.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions from the board?
I just make one more comment. Well, Mr. Lewis talked about speeding up the schedule and associated cost savings with that. It also just takes out, I think, almost a year of disruption for our high school students, which is also really important, I think. Being able to have access to those buildings and not not be disrupted will be just a real positive with this process.
I also say thank you to Mr. Mater and his staff for being so flexible and moving and, you know, that's that's a lot to do. So we appreciate that. All right, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Comerfer?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the Sycamore High School roof replacement project.
So moved. Second it. Items four and then subsequently items five deal with significant roof replacements at two of our buildings that are undergoing renovations. So, Mr. Lewis, I Mr. Lewis, I again, I apologize, but I turn this over to you.
Sure. So you'll recall that last, last year about, I would say roughly about this time, you voted to approve phase one, uh, which was a large section there. And I'll just start with the high school. There are three original sections. As of last year, there were three original sections remaining that needed to be addressed. Uh, after last, well, after last year, now there are only two remaining sections. Uh, one, this section that we're doing, that's entitled section K, doesn't mean anything to you guys, but it means something to us. We label all of our sections of the high school roof. Uh, and section K is one of the main corridors. And really it extends from kind of the middle of the building all the way to what will be the new front of the building. So it'll be right over those temporary classrooms and areas that won't be renovated until the end. So it's again, it's been critical to stay in front of the renovations and stay in front with our roofing process and making sure that we get these roofing sections done. Last year, we had a very rich dialogue and discussion and, and I know the board was very passionate about, you know, look, we're, we're, we have a bond issue of 127 and a half million. You know, why are we not putting this, these roofing sections in that 127 and a half million? And I'll, I'll just refresh your memory that as we work through this process, you know, we, we never included roofing sections to be a part of those projects because we knew the challenges and the amount that we faced as part of that process. We also knew that it was very important, and I remember the dialogue about the bond issue before we, we put it on the ballot and before you voted to put it on the ballot, you know, we were very concerned about putting too much money on and getting too close to our limit that we can borrow. We didn't want to become a special needs designated district. And I don't even know if we could have gotten approval as a special needs designated district. So we had a very rich dialogue and discussion about that topic and making sure that we put the right number on the ballot. You know, what I would say is the high school roof and Sims Elementary Roof have always been something as we trended through our capital improvement plan has always been something that we intended to do. It just happened to coincide with the time that we started working on our plans for the high school and doing the renovations at the high school. So I know last year during our, our meetings that, you know, really our, our push and, you know, your desire was to take it from the bond issue monies. And I'll just say as a, a person that you employ to really pay attention to all the finances and pay attention to our contracts. You know, I just, I know that Mr. Janigan and I are doing as much as we can to watch the budgets and keep things under budget, but I, I definitely am concerned that will there be money left in that budget and will we need to use our capital improvement funds to offset some of these costs? So I certainly appreciate your support. I know the, the board supports capital improvements and I know you support making these upgrades. And I know you understand the need for doing these things. So I certainly understand if you want to have additional dialogue or certainly we're happy to answer any questions. You know, about the recommendation, whether it's to take it from the capital improvement budget or the bond issue funds. And certainly, you know, that's, that's certainly of, of your discussion that you can have with us. So certainly I'll, I'll be quiet now on the recommendation for the high school and certainly I'll give you the Sims update in a moment.
Yeah, this is Mr. Evans here. I'll offer up some comments. I mean, the board actually already approved to take, um, you know, funds for the roofing out of the bond budget. Um, and we had a long discussion in the spring. Luckily, the, the bids, the bid process is actually coming in better for us, which helps takes the pressure off. But I think when we made this decision, we were willing to, you know, go through the process and we were praying that, you know, the bidding environment would keep being strong for us. I'm still of the mind that the roofing project as approved by the board should go through the bond budget for now. And preserve our, our other capital expenses for the, for later. When we did our tax review in, in December and in the last review that Mrs. Weber presented to us, uh, we'd assumed that the bond budget was paying for all this roofing. So I'm still of the mind that, um, you know, we ought to put that through the bond budget and preserve our capital budget for unforeseen things and/or elements that we may have to pay for in the future as we discussed back in, uh, March and April and again in December this past year.
Just let me clarify, I believe last year was about 2.4 million in roofing that we, we undertook. Is that, that's correct, Mr. Lewis? Okay. And that is included in the bond issue. We do have that paid for with bond issue funds. And we don't think that that's going to change. We don't think we're, when we had that discussion, I think we did discuss that if we needed to, we could potentially go back and charge that back to capital, capital funds if we needed to. We think that is going to, to work out okay. We think that'll be fine. Well, we aren't quite sure, but I think what's going to become really clear here in the next couple of weeks is whether the bond issue can fund any additional roof, roof replacements. So, you know, it really is going to depend on the market, how the bids come in for, for green and the junior high. And whether, when we see all of our options, see all of our priorities, whether that's the decision that the, that the Board of Education makes to, to use any potential, potential savings that we might see as a result of the bid market. What we want to do though, is be able to move forward. I don't know that there's any question that this is, is work that needs to be done, that we think that it's important in both of these buildings with, we think of everything that we're doing underneath these with renovations that we have a good roofing system to make sure that it's protected. So I don't think there's any question about the projects themselves that we want to move forward. I think it's really more about how they're funded. At this point in time, we think that at, at least in some part, that we are going to want to utilize or need to utilize our cash reserve from our general fund for even the capital improvement budget as opposed to the bond issue. But we absolutely commit that should we see savings within the bid process that's coming up here in the next couple of weeks, that we would revisit whether we might be able to shift some of that cost back over to the bond issue budget when we see how the bids come in and what are, and whether, what of our priorities can fit into that overall cost for, um, from the master facility plan. I don't know if there's a way that we can make possibly amend this motion to incorporate that commitment. That's something that we, we would be open to do.
I certainly don't want to take money away from the cap, from the, the building, the, uh, the building project at this point for something that could impact academics for the next, you know, several generations of this community over the cost of a roof today. I do agree if there's money left over, it should go back to the budget, but the roofing has been budgeted for many years out of the capital improvement budget. And I'm in favor of moving forward right now to get the pricing on the roofing and get it done this summer. Um, and then if there's money left over, which we'll know very soon, to move that back into the, from, from the project back into the roof. Back into capital, uh, general expenditure fund.
For me, what's important is that the capital spend doesn't deviate from historical norms. And I appreciate the answer to the question that I asked about the historical spend. From my review, it looks like the historical spend has been between $2 billion and $3 million a year. And capital spend averaging about 2.5 million since 2010. There was a blip for the science wing development, um, which is understandable. If our five-year forecast and our plan for this year covers this expenditure under the capital, then I'm okay to prove as is. But I do agree with Mr. Evans, if there is, if the bids come in attractively. At some level, this is left pocket, right pocket. But it's, what's important about it in my mind is that we don't deviate from our historical trends on capital spending. If we start to see those trends go up while we have a bond issue that's funding capital work, that's a flag to me. So as long as we're within historical trends, I'm supportive of this initiative. In any case, whether it's left pocket, right pocket, I think it's important that we do the roofing work now. And I, I, I think it's important timing wise to move forward with this work.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll chime in too. I think doing the work is something that absolutely has to happen. We're kind of getting ahead of kind of a reopening and slow climb in commodity prices and having the flexibility. Certainly appreciate, uh, Mrs. Weber and Mr. Lewis have a long track record of being able to make things work on time and in budget. I do agree with what Mr. Evans says though, that if we do realize savings, if we can move that in to the other pocket, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And I'll just remind, you know, both Mr. Mercurio and, you know, Mr. Ballin, approved funding that's under the roof back in April. I mean, you proposed it, Mr. Ballin seconded. So we've gone through this process to say, we'll look at it on the backend if we need to pull money out of the capital budget. But we weren't going to go on the front end and do that. We're going to use the bond funds and then have that discussion on the backend, have a rich discussion about what are the elements now that we need to fund? The focus of, you know, keeping capital improvements in the bond fund. And also thinking that, you know, the capital improvement funding should be going down and not up. And this may have been a discussion prior to you coming on the board, uh, Mr. Commerford. But hopefully that all the improvements we're putting in from a capital standpoint should be driving that budget down while we have new equipment in, uh, as opposed to the older things we've been taking care of, which is a reason to go look at this all again on the backend.
But at the same time, we have several buildings which are going to be getting older and, and the elementary schools that are going to start to require more maintenance. So I, you know, I, I don't know that that number is going to go dramatically down or should it go dramatically down? But yeah, I agree with that.
I, I, I'm just saying, we went through the discussion, you know, back in April. Everything has gotten better from the environment we're going into, uh, from a funding standpoint. And I think which is helped us to, you know, where we were. And that's why I'm of the moment, just looking at it on the backend. Just like COVID hit us and we wound up having to pull a stream of money out of that fund. That's why we have it. And I would rather protect it for now and focus on having the bond fund for capital things that we foresee in that. But we can change our minds.
So I guess the question is, do we need to, if, if understanding what you're saying, but do we want to amend item four on the agenda to, to what Mrs. Weber said is after the bids come in to potentially replace that money that we would take out of the capital budget? Is anyone interested in amending that or not? Or do you just want to vote on it as is?
I'm okay with it as is because we can always do it, right?
You can always make a, we could always change this, yes, at a future time.
No, we, I mean, we don't need a motion to do, we don't need a motion to do that. If the bids come in low, you can transfer the money back to, from, from the, uh, capital, from the levy bond issue to capital improvements.
Yes.
The amendment is just making a formal amendment.
Yes. I mean, I, if you wanted to, to put, insert something into this motion, amend this motion to, to memorialize it now as opposed to later. I don't know if this captures, uh, but it would be a further recommendation that the board would reevaluate the funding source dependent on master facility plan bid outcomes or cost outcomes, something like that.
I, I think the real, and from my perspective, the real question comes at the end of the whole process. After you've gone through everything and you're looking at what was on the margins of things that were, where you wanted to upscale, add in more electric, whatever it may be that are on that fringe of the tail end of the capital structure. And having that dialogue at that point, is it worth it throwing X amount of dollars out of the capital budget because we want a higher grade of fiber optics cable running?
So you're not thinking in the next few months as we see those, but more so at the end of the whole project?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I read, and I think that's the trade-off that I think is really important. Organizations aren't great about managing capital budgets by spreading it all over the place and then saying, okay, we'll come back together and we look at it. If you manage it, I mean, they're not great at tying that together then. And that's why I think it's just important to keep it in the bond budget. And at the end, it was really important and make those trade-offs to the capital budget at the tail end of this, you know, in three years. Because we'll know what's important about. We do need it upgraded, so we do need X. Or we want to preserve a capital budget, the worst state. It'll be hard to do that, you know, incrementally, I think, over the next couple of months for everything that comes up. So that's my point of change in just having a richer dialogue with, you know, what are the things the district really needs to go after at the tail end of the budget, which is why I just watched the order of looking at it. And that's the same discussion we had in April and why we, for the specific line item, we said we were going to put it in the bond fund and talk about it at, at the end of the capital building project. But we can vote on, I'm the only one who wants to change that and have it managed on the tail end of that. And really look at what's important, that you go back to the capital budget to pull things out. And I think the roof's important. I just think there's a richer dialogue at the end of this. When you say there's another $3 million or $2.8 million or maybe not a spend left, which I think will be an addition from like, look at it at that point in time.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. So I, I think we should amend it to what you, the addition that you added.
Just let me just make sure that I read this back, but I, I think it's going to be continued to be funded by the district capital improvement budget as written. However, we would add, insert, the board will reevaluate the funding source dependent on the NFP project, uh, project cost completion. Does that make some? MFP cost project or MFP completion?
I'm good with that.
And Mr. Mercurio, you made the motion. So you came to amend it. Mr. Commerford.
Okay, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mr. Ballin.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
No.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the Sims Elementary Roof Replacement Project.
May I make one, may I ask one question before we get the motion is, do you want similar, a similar phrase put into that motion as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved. Seconded.
Any, any more details related to the specific Sims project that we need to offer, Mr. Lewis?
Just a real quick comment, and I left it out. Unfortunately, I, I left it out on the high school, but I'll just, because the Sims Elementary represents a significant cost savings over, if you, in, in it, really this is just a credit to the board and a credit to Mrs. Weber for continuing to challenge me to make sure that we're always getting the best prices. Cause if you recall, we, we took those prices and moved forward with that project right before the COVID-19 pandemic hit. So really I think one of your challenges at that meeting was, can we really take a second look at the pricing? And can you, you know, ask your contractors to not only hold the price, but then, you know, challenge them, especially in this bidding environment to take a second look at their pricing. So we did make a change, uh, in our contractors and it's a contractor, they're all vetted contractors that we have worked with. But it represents, uh, about, uh, on Sims, it represents about a $270,000 savings over what the bid was, uh, for last year. And that's a total of phase two and three. So for this phase, it'll be about 150,000 lower than we would have spent last year at this time with the pricing that we would have held. So for this phase, it'll be about 150,000 lower than we would have spent last year at this time with the pricing that we would have held. For the high school, it wasn't much different. Unfortunately, the high school sections are just absolutely monstrous. They have to crawl on their hands and knees to do some of the roof work underneath some of the equipment. And if you've ever looked at the high school roof, there's a number of pieces of equipment up there. It was only about a $30,000 savings over what it was previously. But the 30,000 actually came as a credit because of some allowance that Mr. Mater gave us to begin work before the end of school, because we'll be able to get some things started and get those contractors lined up earlier. But again, at Sims Elementary, because we rebid it and we were able to get some better pricing, we're going to save 150,000 on this section. So nothing else other than this, again, keeps us ahead of the construction and allows us to move forward with, with phase two. Phase three will be at about 100, I'll, I'll say a little over 150,000 savings on phase three, and we are having them hold that price.
Any questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio? Mr. Ballin?
Aye.
Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
No, for the same comments, just to reflect that I think it should be part of the bond.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the 2021, 2022 school calendar.
So moved, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. In the packet, I'm recommending the calendar, a school calendar for the 21, 22 school year. Let me, just a little background. This is a little different than what our typical practice has been. Typically, if you've been around in Sycamore a while, you know, we typically have a couple of years of calendars in the bank. We want to be sensitive to parents' planning and so they can kind of lean forward a little bit. Probably about a year or so ago, we were starting to have this conversation about adding years to the calendar. For calendar years, looking forward, and I, I pushed pause on that for, for the very reason that we have significant renovation and construction action that's going to be taken throughout the district. And I wanted to get a better handle on exactly what that was going to entail and what the potential impact was to the magnitude of the work. My greatest fear was is to approve several calendars years out, find out that this construction or renovation schedule was in conflict with that and then have to go back and change it. So we slowed it down. We've had a lot of time spending with Mr. Janigan and his team and Mr. Lewis. And as you guys are fully aware, in terms of where we're at in the design process, we've got a good handle on that now. So as a result of that, I'm recommending the 21, 22 school calendar. With the idea being of several factors that kind of went into that. One, we, we want to make sure that in our calendar, we protect from one year to the next, the number of, of days kids are in school, instructional days. That's important to us, critically important. So we didn't want to do anything that meant that shortened that in any way possible. But we also wanted to make sure that we gave our construction crews, specifically this coming summer at Sims and the high school, enough ample time to get, to stay on their schedule. And as a result of that, you will see that we are, I am recommending that we start school a little later as, well, I should say what we've done in the past, not what we did this past year. Take this past year, hopefully throw it out because we started late for COVID reasons. But our typical process is we've started first, about the second week of August. In this calendar, I'm recommending that we start the last week of August, okay? That's going to give renovation crews at Sims and the high school the amount of time that they need to get things in a place where it needs to be based on their schedule. So as a result of that, and understanding that it's important that we protect the amount of instructional days, several factors needed to be thought about. One, as a result of that, that later start date, the end date then will get us into the first week of June, which is a little contrary to what we've normally done typically in past years. We finished prior Memorial Day, this is a post Memorial Day day. And then you've got some things in the middle that you got to think about, understanding the number of days you want to, you want to hold sacred. Do you then dip into winter break or do you dip into spring break? Those are tough choices, okay? And I'm recommending that we take a couple of days from winter break. I know our community really likes the full two weeks of winter break, as most people do. The alternative was is we shorten spring break. I'd want to go there, to be honest with you. So as a result of that, a couple typical days that we would typically have off at winter break, we will be in school. And I think that's December 20 and 21, okay? In total, that still gives our community, our kids, our teachers and staff 12 full days of winter break as opposed to what would be a normal 14 day, okay? Now, moving forward, the same number of professional days, conference days, everything are in there, so we're, we're okay there. Moving forward, at least for the next couple of years, okay, I would recommend that we kind of get into this pattern a little bit of, of really making sure we analyze the construction renovation schedule before we start approving counters. I know that's a little, can be a little challenging for families, not having a couple of years out. But my recommendation would be that we stay in that for at least the next couple of years, instead of approving one that we have to come back and change it, okay? I appreciate the patience of the community in waiting for this calendar. But I think it's the right calendar, considering all of the factors that are in place, Mrs. Weiss. So I will, I'll take anybody's question.
I, I have a question and I appreciate the explanation on the date, so it's not a question related to changing this calendar. I think another factor, because I lived with high school students where they did exams after winter break.
I agree.
And before winter break.
Yep.
And it's a clear, I think, preference for students, families to complete the semester before the winter break.
I agree.
If we are in a steady state where we are going to be doing exams after winter break, year after year, because we need so many days in the, is, do we think about having the summer longer earlier than later to accommodate? And that's my only question in this calendar.
One of the negative trade offs in this calendar. I agree with you. When we got into the process of doing the end of the semester prior to winter break, kids have exams at the high school. That's a good thing. Unfortunately, that's a negative trade off to this, this calendar. And I, I know Mr. Mater's thinking about that. It may have some creative ways to work through that. But Mr. Commerford, moving forward, we will consider that. Or we do have to, you know, you, you end early or, you know, there's only so much time in the summer. It's got to come from somewhere, right?
We backed up this year, so, but by definition, it's the question is, does it going to have a knock on effect?
Right.
For multiple years.
Right. And I think, I don't know that we know that yet. We just have to get a handle on where we're at with, with renovation and construction schedules. So it's not the perfect.
One other question I would have too is, I know that when we started usually the second week of August with sports teams, is that going to impact any participation or anything like that?
Should not, should not. I mean, we, back when we, before we made the switch, starting earlier, we were, we were in a process where we were starting third week of August or so. And we'll line that up. That'll be okay.
My, my last question is, or this one is, I know many families look forward to trying to figure out what graduation days will be. Is, is that going to be added to the calendar in the near future? Or is there still work to be done on that?
I think we haven't identified yet. Graduation is tentatively scheduled for this calendar on May 29.
Okay.
And we'll put that in the, in the communication.
The only question I have is maybe more around, you know, academics. And as we, we've gotten through half of this year and trying to go through the other half, really assessing, you know, the impact of the friction that COVID's put on, just, just doing stuff. And, you know, instead of people having to work 100%, they have to work 110%, but you still struggle to, you know, maintain all the protocols and, and do the education. By the end of the year or maybe going through the summer, you know, we find, hey, it might be beneficial to have more instructional days. Instead of maintaining where we are, that's just been a question. I don't think anyone knows the answer now. But if the education community came back and said, boy, more days would help, you know, just to catch up on stuff that just because we couldn't get to, I know we heard some of that from the high school this year and some of their, some of the discussions we had around exams versus, you know, education time. And I would be interested in, in hearing that dialogue if it said, hey, expand this by, you know, five days, 10 days would help us out a lot. The downside to that, I know it's funny, there, there are a lot of implications to that. And this kind of feeds into the discussion we had a little bit about the, the roofing fund. If you had to make a trade off on funding, would you put it in days for some of these other trade offs going forward? But anyway, I think if you go through this process, if that comes up, if there's a dialogue around that, I for one would be interested in just understanding the benefit of, of extra days.
Thank you.
And I think maybe kind of along the same lines, not, not necessarily adding extra days, but what, is there any opportunities for in summer school or summer, you know, summer that we, that could address maybe some of those educational issues?
Yeah, please note that the, the summer school leaders and the, and the team is already digging in what are summer school opportunities need a little bit. Understanding that the challenges that we've had, we're trying to figure out what some of the unknowns are, obviously, is how we're going to be able to deliver those services this summer.
Right.
We got pretty creative last summer, I can share with you, but I've given the go ahead to, to think about whatever needs to happen to be kids that may need those catch up to get that done. So we may, we will bring that back to you at some point when those, those ideas are clear. And I kind of know the board has certainly been willing to give me the go ahead and do what's necessary in the interest of our students. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. The only question I have is with professional development days, did you look at that and all this potential to front load maybe some of that?
We, we didn't, Mr. Mercurio. We really got back into more of our traditional process of doing that. You know, as you know, we front loaded so much because we had so many unique things that were faced in the school year. Got a good, wow, we never have a, a, a perfect handle on it, but we think we have a good handle on that. I think you will see that throughout here, there's opportunities that selected days throughout the year that provide that professional development. But we didn't really see a need to front load five or 10 like we did this year because, you know, hope being hope that we're going to have some sense of normalcy.
And I was just wondering, you know, we're learning so many things with how we've changed behaviors with COVID that, you know, was there an added benefit? Did that turn out to be something that we regretted or is that something that offered added benefit?
I, I fundamentally believe as superintendent that it was an incredibly valuable time that we front loaded this very unique school year with those additional state days to get our staff ready.
Right, right. No, I mean, the time, I, I understand, but you know, just putting it up at the beginning of the school year as we look at this construction calendar, you know, thinking if that worked out really well, maybe we can pull some student days. Maybe spacing the PB day, it's kind of harder to kind of get reoriented.
We'll consider that as we move forward. It's a great thought. I, I kind of misread where you were going with that now either. Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballin?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for Sims renovation GMP amendment number one.
So moved, second.
Mr. Lewis, I'll change, I'll turn this over to you, please.
These are always the best kind of change orders.
We have parentheses around them.
Anytime there's parentheses around it, it's a deduct. So you'll recall, we had some unsuitable soils. They, you know, I'll just, a burrow pit is basically, they dig a big hole and they use the suitable soils out of the big hole to go put it on the area they need the suitable soils in. And then they move the unsuitable soils back into the hole. So they didn't need to make it as large, so it resulted in a $12,782 credit back to us. So that's good news and, you know, if it's of interest to the board, I know we're trying to finalize our financial reporting, but I can also send you, since Sims has had the most change orders, I can just send you an update on where we're at with change orders and how that's impacted our contingency we're still doing, and I feel like we're trending very well on the project.
Great. I would be interested in seeing that.
Yeah, I think that'd be good to see. Along the same lines, Mr. Lewis, I know you and Mrs. Weber have been working on that reporting format. Will that, would that contain this type of stuff so we can see it clearly?
I'll leave that to Mrs. Weber. She's been.
The reporting format that was going to summarize the finding and change orders and status, would that capture these types of things so we see it clearly?
It should. I think what, what we are looking at is that you'll see once we have complete bid options, we're going to continue to track those contract obligations so that you can see what has been obligated to date, what balances are still available by, by project. And then as we, we allocate funds, I think we'll still be able to see what funds are available, both from the contingency standpoint that was set up originally within each budget, as well as anything that might be left over after we get through the bid process. So that's our intent, is to be able to, to continue to track those and for the board to be able to continue to monitor that spreadsheet both by project and overall the total master facility plan, that's the plan. Does that make sense? I know you did have one question and maybe we can follow up on it later, but you said something about the speed of the spend. And I, I wasn't quite sure what your concern was in that area.
Yeah, the, um, what you presented is an outline of how the funds were being spent. Didn't give an indication, are we ahead of budget on the spend, behind budget? For instance, if the project spend was, you know, a consistent 100,000 a month or something like that, and we're trailing behind it, does it mean on the back end, as a, you know, as from an oversight standpoint, are we running, you know, time wise over budget, things that are going to cost us money? So that time element of how the spend was going, you couldn't see in that condition, the, in the initial draft. I'm not sure how you fix it without making it longer, but that was just what was in the back of my mind, that things get hidden from a time standpoint. If you're not looking month to month or something like that.
Is the reporting percent completion satisfied?
It's percent spend and percent completion would get closer to the time, yeah.
One additional comment, just about, so, just so that the, because the community, obviously, I just want to let them know, we have a hard, we had a hard cost contingency at Sims of 682,500. We have spent 86,974. Most of that was on, a big portion of that was on the site permit renovations, some abatement demo, and then the rest was on suitable soils and undercut. So we've spent 86,974 and we're on, and we're out of the ground. So I, I do believe, you know, based on how much we've spent out of the contingency for these change orders, again, we're trending well, but I did just send that document to your email, so you will have it.
All right. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballin?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Forrest.
I have nothing.
Okay.
At this time.
All right. Thank you so much. We have done a lot tonight. All right. Moving on to, I need a motion for the approval of the treasurer's consent agenda.
So, second.
Mrs. Weber?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out a few things this evening. One is that under the appropriation increases and decreases, you see a nearly million dollar increase under a construction budget. That was just to support some of these GMPs on the, the high school and, and Sims project. You will see us adding to our appropriation for the construction costs in much larger numbers after we have the bid completion here in the next couple of weeks. So you'll see a, a change in the appropriation at that point. The other area is the coronavirus relief fund, and I've talked about a couple of different, we have, we now have three buckets of coronavirus relief fund that are all federally funded. One being an original allocation of about $288,000 that was back in the summer. But the two additional projects that are adding to the appropriation at this point in time are an additional about $75,000 that we received for the broad. are an additional about $75,000 that we received for, um, the broadband connectivity grant, that Mr. Fritz applied for and was able to get, um, extended based on availability of funds. And the second thing that might not make a lot of sense, uh, but it's because of it being federal money. We have to track it as funds received and budget expense as opposed to just a credit from Hamilton County. We got about $270,000, if you recall, from the county and, and leftover coronavirus monies that they had. So the, uh, areas of like the 167,000 approximately in regular instruction was dollars that we had to budget, in a federal fund as well as the approximately $100,000, um, in building and maintenance that we had to include in our budget to show those accounting entries for the about $270,000 that the county provided to us. That's kind of an audit requirement. And if you recall, Mr. Evans, when we talked with the auditors, they said, these are going to be areas that are going to require some additional, um, accounting entries and, and because of the risk associated with those funds from an audit perspective. So, um, as opposed to just being able to put a credit into our budget, what they wanted us to do is receipt those funds in as if we received them, set up a budget to show, um, an accounting entry to reflect that they were expensed from federal funds and we made a credit back to our general fund. So what you don't necessarily see is a reduction yet in our general fund, but we think it'll, it'll result in an overall cost, the general fund.
An extra paperwork for you, Weber. Um, all right. Anything else? Any other questions? All right. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Commerfer.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
And Mr. Mercureo.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, fiscal year 2021 second quarter update.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Are you driving this presentation this evening? Okay, if you can go on to the next slide. Okay, uh, just a, a quick overview, we're going to give a couple of very, um, quick updates for what's happening in the general fund. As we noted, uh, the child nutrition fund is one that has been greatly impacted, uh, by the pandemic. So I want to make sure that you have an ongoing update of how they're operating. We had a, a quick overview at the tax budget hearing about our property value updates and the impact on tax rates. Nothing particularly new about that, but I think from knowing that we might have some additional people in the audience, just to give a quick overview of that, our CAFR and audit, uh, for, uh, fiscal year 20 is complete. And just want to give our community an update that that's out on the website. And then a few what's next for, um, upcoming third quarter of the fiscal year. So, Mr. Lewis, if you could go on, next slide. Okay, um, two, two highlights on the revenue side, uh, from that, uh, just want to make sure we bring to your attention. In this quarter, we did receive our first allocation of TPP reimbursement, um, of about a million dollars, um, in the first half. We'll receive a million in the second half. Um, but the bad news is that just is continuing to phase out. So what has went from a $12 million revenue source many, many years ago, we're down to 2 million this year, we'll be down to a million next year, uh, and then it'll be completely, completely, uh, phased out from our revenue. The other thing that I just wanted to make you aware of is that I'm not quite sure where the Bureau of Workers' Comp, how they have built up this reserve, but they continue to find ways to give it back to employers. I mean, they've been doing it for, for years. And this is actually, I think, the third one they've been able to provide, um, in this calendar year in 2020. So, um, they were able to give, uh, public and private employers that what they've caught, what they deemed a dividend, um, in reserve funds that they felt like they did not need to hold anymore at this point in time. So, um, we got a nice
Are you saying that we got, we got a million dollar dividend? Or is that the total of the funds that?
It's us. We, Sycamore Community Schools received a million dollars.
Okay, great.
Um, in, in reserve from the Bureau of Workers' Comp. So yes, that has maybe a one time thing, but we've gotten more than what we ever thought we would. So, uh, and they basically did it because they knew, you know, it's a way to help employers who are struggling to give them some, you know, and they shouldn't be holding it, you need to give it back, um, but to help with, with COVID relief. But there were really no strings attached to it. So it's really just to help us with cash flow issues if we would have them and to help, uh, provide, um, a funding source for those additional costs that we're realizing because of COVID. So that was, that was good news and something that was unanticipated. So those were two things that happened in this last quarter from the revenue side. Um, our operating expenses continue to track well with an increase of only about a percent over last year. So, um, still, still holding well, um, from year to year. Okay. Mr. Lewis, you can go to the next slide. Um, on the child nutrition front, the second quarter revenue and expense are much better than what we have seen. We've started to realize funding from the feds, um, from reimbursement for, um, for the, the free lunch program that is basically offered to all students this year. So still not quite breaking even, but much better than what we saw in the first quarter of the year. I will point out though, that ending balance, um, of 253,000 was about 700,000 back before the pandemic and basically having nothing coming in, but still, um, paying for our staff and, in the fourth quarter of last year, as well as, um, very little revenue coming in first quarter, which, which that usually happens because we don't, we have July and, and August off, but, um, we're still seeing that continue to be, to be depleted to some extent, but it's much better in this quarter. And our hope is, is that the next two quarters of the fiscal year, we'll see similar results. And I think, um, Mrs. Warren is doing a, a great job under very difficult circumstances and continuing to, keep that, keep that operation going as it has. But I just wanted you to continue to have a pulse, at least on a quarterly basis of, of what's happening in that, that operation, which is, is typically a self sustaining part of our, part of our operations.
Weber, can I ask you just a question on this, uh, ending balance here? If that went negative just because of the COVID situation, there are no implications to that from paying vendors or anything out of a separate fund, it would just be an internal accounting issue for you to handle?
I'm, I'm thinking it's primarily, now, she's not, we have not really been able to have an associated deduction in any kind of staffing because of the kinds of, um, that, the labor that goes into running the programs the way that they are. But I really see this as, as for the most part COVID related, just because we don't have nearly the number of students that are in our schools. And, and we are providing, providing, you know, to other
My question was, I just wanted to make sure that if this did go negative because of COVID right now, it wouldn't have any operational implication. I would have to deal with it overall, but it's not going to change getting someone paid or getting a vendor paid or getting more just to students.
Be kids. I mean, right?
It is. And, yeah.
It would impact
It would impact or would not?
I'm sorry, what?
So I, I think what Mr. Evans is asking is, is that ending balance for child nutrition right now is $253,000. But if we got into a situation where that went negative, would that impact the ability to actually run the child nutrition department?
What you would see in most districts is they would make a transfer from their general operating.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
And that may be necessary next summer. Yep. Just to get us started and keep us running through July and August.
But didn't you just say that the burn rate for the next couple of quarters should be something similar?
We, we would hope so because the, the feds have extended the free lunch through the next two quarters. And those expenses are pretty stable, uh, because they're basically payroll, fringe benefits, um, and, and food costs. So I think they, they might even get a bit better because, uh, the first, there's a lag in, in how we receive those funds. And the first, um, reimbursement that we received from the state that were within, that was for September, but received in October, was, uh, not to where it has been for the following two months because we didn't start school until September 8th, number one. And those first couple of weeks, our participation was, was not very good just because we had to use different protocols to get kids through the line. Um, we didn't have the free, the free luncheon for the first couple of weeks. So my hope is that revenue, that it may even get a little bit better in the final two, two quarters of the fiscal year. All right. Next slide. Okay, this is just an, oh, an update again. When we were looking at things that were going to happen in second quarter, we had our, um, the results of our Hamilton County, countywide triennial update of property values. Tax, tax bills have gone out, um, and we're starting to see our receipts in January from, um, for real estate taxes that are levied right now. Um, again, that was, uh, based on a three year cycle, looking at sales data for 2017, 18 and 19. And we saw, um, one are really kind of unprecedented increases in property values, uh, for that triennial update cycle of nearly 12% district wide, um, biggest increase is, is in residential, but we also saw, um, pretty significant increases in our commercial and industrial area. We don't anticipate, you know, I anticipate that those residential values will hold because we're still seeing a hot sales market, um, in our area. The commercial and industrial, I think we probably, we may see some sectors where we'll see some increased border, uh, revision activity where we may have some, some businesses contest their values.
And can you, uh, compare that to the county as a whole? Were you able to get that?
Where, you know, it was really throughout the county. And, you know, most county, most of the other school districts in the county saw very similar, similar results. And, you know, I think it was la, last year or the year before, Warren County had their triennial update. They were seeing the same kinds of, of increases. Today I was on a call with, uh, the other Alliance District and it's really happening throughout the state. I'm sure that right now, um, low interest rates are, are helping drive, drive some of those sales and some of those values. But, you know, that, that wasn't totally the case for you to move in, though we, we thought we were seeing historically low mortgage rates at that time too. Okay. Um, next slide, Mr. Lewis. Okay. And so the impact of those triennial updates, we've talked about it, um, on several occasions is, um, House Bill 920, which is law that went into place several years ago, or many, many, many years ago, takes out that inflationary, um, impact of those values going up by actually reducing, the, the mileage rate that's charged to bring in basically similar revenue to the district. So we saw over a three mil reduction in our residential mileage rate, for what's being collected in 2021 as a result of that. Just to reiterate our 2019 bond issue, we, uh, promised the community that it would be levied at 2.4 mils for this year. And that is what's, what's occurring. So good news there as well. Okay. Next slide, Mr. Lewis. Okay. Um, as, as we typically give you this update, um, we still have one of the lowest, uh, tax rates around. Uh, we rank 21 out of 25 in Hamilton County, and then we also always include, uh, Kings and Mason, our neighboring district. So we're the fifth lowest. Um, and Mr. Lewis, just the next slide. And you can see, uh, kind of that, that range of, over the county, um, over 60 mils in Finney Town, which is a really residential district, down to Indian Hill, which has the lowest rate. The, the average and mean is about 42 mils. So at, at 35 mils, we are also, uh, well below the average for the county. Next slide. Okay. Um, CAFR and audit, Mr. Evans gave an update on our audit last, uh, last evening meeting in December. That, uh, audit has now been released by the Auditor of State's office. So you can access it. We've, we've linked, um, the Auditor of State's website to our website. So you can see it there. Or if you, uh, if a community member would go out to the Auditor of State's website, do a search, they would also be able to find, um, the district's most recent audit. We've, have, we've posted several years link on our website. You can go back, uh, more than 10 years on the, on the Auditor of State's website. Our CAFR is also available on the website and we do have printed copies and we had someone pick one up today.
My hero.
And it was a misread. Okay. Next slide. Okay. And some of what's next, we talked a lot about construction and competitive bidding and GMP and contractor wars. Uh, that's going to happen this next quarter, um, for Green, the junior high. And I believe we're going to have the, uh, most of Sims done by the end of this quarter. I think the next big package will be probably, um, ready for acceptance for, for the remaining renovations. So, uh, those three projects, we should know what our price is going into those by the end of this third quarter. And we're hoping that the market really helps us with that. And I, and I think it will. We are going to get another round of federal stimulus money and that was approved back in, um, December by the feds. And what we have heard is that, um, this round will probably be about four times what we got in our initial, uh, phase, which was 350,000, so about 1.4 million, um, from this next stage of, of stimulus money. Not quite sure about what all that can be used for. Um, we've heard there's quite a bit of flexibility, but in just some very initial discussions with, with Mr. Forstopp, what we've talked about, what do we need to do to prep for next year? And what can we do to, um, potentially fund some of these, continuing some of those virtual, um, offerings that we've had this year so that we maybe don't have to use our general fund reserve to use that, we can utilize these COVID dollars, um, because they aren't, they don't have to be used by the end of this school year. I think we have all of next fiscal year that we can utilize.
And technology would be something on the table.
Technology is definitely on the table. I have talked to Mr. Fritz too about, about that as a potential. And he's also told me that we need to start thinking about, if whatever we need for next year, we're going to have to order in the next month or two to make sure it's available. So we've had those discussions as well.
Are these funds retroactive to what we spent over the course of this year on COVID? Or is it just going forward once you get the funds? Do you know how that?
Now, I don't know. I mean, most of the other funding sources, they have let us go all the way back in March. And they might. So, um, that's a potential as well.
I mean, I, I think it'd be great to, because we did commit a lot of money and fun into this to go back, fill that first. Replenish what we have and then look forward to, you know, whatever our needs are. At least we'll have that covered because we won't have to worry from an audit standpoint. You know, trying to spend money just because they need to get tagged in a certain way.
Yeah.
I think it's really about, we're going to have to identify the needs going forward and and if we find that it's not going to utilize all this money, because I, I think the other thing that we are going to find as well potentially with, with the new administration is that there may be even more federal stimulus money coming our way to help us remain open. So we're hearing that, um, as well. So that may be a reason to utilize this money to do what we're all, cover some of the things we're already doing. And I, I think it's just there, we're going to continue to see some additional funding through, through the feds to help us with this. So we'll continue those discussions as we go forward. Okay. Um, and then finally, um, this is the state budget year. The governor will introduce his state budget, um, proposal, including everything, but, you know, we're going to look at schools, uh, February 1. It heads first to the House of Representatives, who is, our understanding, they're going to continue looking at the Paterson model. The Senate has, is working on their own model, so it's going to be, uh, very interesting to watch. The, the one thing that I think is really good news The, the one thing that I think is really good news is that on the Senate side, Senator Blessing is likely to be kind of in charge. Our senator is going to be in charge of the school funding discussion. He's the vice chair of the Education Committee in the Senate, and his special assignment is to work through the state funding model. So, so God bless him. But, you know, we're, we are going to make sure that he utilizes us as a resource. And I think one of the things that, you know, being in Hamilton County, utilizing the county as kind of the guinea pig of looking at funding models is, is, is really benef, will be beneficial to him. He's got an urban, he's got suburban, he's got a couple that are kind of rural, you know, kind of that inner ring suburban, which has its own challenges. So I think that he's uniquely positioned within the districts he serves to be able to evaluate some of those things. So we definitely know we will be bending his ear and giving him as much advice as, as he'll take in this process. So heavy lobbying here this year because of everything that potentially could go on with some new funding, funding models going forward. Mr. Macario will keep, keep talking with you about that. Okay. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Weber was very informative. Any other questions, Mrs. Weber? All right. Moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the financial report for December 2020.
Some moves. Sir.
I do not have anything extra or additional.
Any questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the board.
Mr. Mallard.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Mr. Macario.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, and that includes items from the addendum 3A and B.
Some moves. Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the board.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Mr. Macario.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council Representative.
Some moves. Second. Sounds exciting, Mrs. Weber.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mrs. Weber. You sound thrilled.
Well, actually, it, it is fine because usually I get a touch base with the partners of Blue Ash Montgomery and, and you see how much they have their act together because they have, always have a good report. They show that they're meeting their requirements, and it's, it's all good. So it's fine.
We appreciate your service. Please call the board.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. Macario.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Legislative liaison report.
Yeah, I'll be brief. You heard from Mrs. Weber, the budget bill is this year, so it's going to be busy. February is usually our month where we meet up with our legislators, and I assume that Mr. Forstovle and Mrs. Weber will put together a packet and kind of arrange those meetings for the board's information. I just want to remind you of our four reps. We have Ohio rep for District 27 is Tom Linkman. Ohio rep for District 28 is Jessica Miranda. She's a former school board member of Wood. Ohio senator, District 7, is Steve Wilson. And he covers areas of Sims, I believe, Sims Town, Chover, right? And Ohio senator from District 8 is Louis Watson Jr., who does cover Blue Ash and Montgomery. As you heard tonight, he's a key member to lobby this year, so.
I did want to mention something. If you recall, at the end of the lame duck session, we were concerned about some potential legislation that would have provided additional Board of Revision opportunities that we felt were unnecessary. And, and the lame duck, the way the lame duck legislation was written probably was not completely well thought out. It died in lame duck, so it did not, did not move forward. We are going to continue, I think, seeing discussion around the report card coming up here in the next couple of months. I believe that testing is still, still occurring, so that did not get, get delayed. So I know that was a concern of yours, Mr. Macario. I, I do think there's probably going to be some concern about how that, that data will be used and whether it would have consequences around school choice and things like that. So hopefully that will, will be addressed. I don't know that you have any updates on that. Mr. Forstovle. Given the climate, I think having those kinds of high consequences tied to it is not appropriate. However, continuing with the testing is, I think was your main concern.
Right. And I think, you know, all the parties are kind of coalescing around that kind of support. So I think that's a good, we'll continue to monitor and report back.
All right, moving on to City Board Advisory Commission.
Just also a brief update. We met last Monday, January 11. It was a working session primarily because our first topic will be in February. But I would highlight that Mrs. Weber gave an excellent presentation on the financial impact of COVID for our district to our members, and it was very well received. They very much appreciated the topic and the review. So thank you to Mrs. Weber for providing that to the Advisory Commission.
I have a question. Is that something that you think would be good for the community?
I.
Potential town hall format, you know, maybe at a later date?
Based on the reaction from the Advisory Commission, I thought, I thought people were very engaged and very interested in the topic.
I think, you know, my opinion is that that's something that we should, you know, be able to broadcast a little bit.
Highlighting, highlighting the value from the work on the federal funds and how all of that processed through, I think is, was very, yeah, helpful for the community to see that.
I would agree with you, John. You know, maybe, maybe something else we could do is put a video on the website. I don't know how long it was, but I certainly would, that would be good information to get out now versus whenever we can do it now.
I think more people would access it if it was a video as opposed to an updated.
A town hall.
Yeah, we have a lot going on. I think the video is good.
All right. And our next, I know a superintendent search update. I'll provide that. The board is, we approved in our last, previous meeting, we have hired K-12 business consultants to help us with our search for a new superintendent, and we're seeking community input. If you notice on our website, our Sycamore School website, there is now an icon for superintendent search. You see it on the screen now, a little man standing at a podium.
Or a woman or person.
Or woman. Did I say a man? Oh, my God. A person standing at the podium. And, sorry, it's late. We. What? Let's say not, dude. Sorry, everyone. So a person who would potentially be our next superintendent, man or woman. We are also going to have on our website a survey that you can take, and we will be having virtual focus groups for staff and students as well as an opportunity for community members to participate in a virtual focus group. So more information is being posted on our website, so I encourage everyone to go there and take a look.
We intended to have that out there by the end of the week. And as well as including some information in our district newsletters and staff newsletters that will go out by the end of the year.
And thank you, Mrs. Bonbright, too, for helping with that. Anything else, Mr. Forstovle or Mrs. Weber? Anything else from the board? All right. Meeting adjourned.